Good morning, everybody. I call the August 11th, 2005, Salina County Commission Public Forum and Meeting to Order. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the public forum, I think Commissioner Smith has something to add to today.
I'd like to read again from one of our founding fathers. This is John Adams, who wrote and said, "We have no government armed with power capable of contending with human passions unbridled by morality and religion. Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." By John Adams.
Thank you. Moving on to the public forum, and it's a time...oh, called to order? That's your job to help me do that. The clerk called the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the public forum. A time when citizens may speak on any issue not on the current agenda today, normally limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Patrick Harrington, 100 South College here in Salina. Last week, I spoke a little bit about conduct and anything that might be used to sanction or to punish or somebody that had, I feel, had misconduct in public service. And Ray Ryska pointed out, or asked the board, that was there anything that would do that, and there is nothing. So, thank you for pointing that out. I did a little bit of research, and I was looking for some information on county commission resolutions, and I find on the website that 2013 is non-existent, and the server error says, "The resource you are looking for could have been removed," that its name has been changed, or is temporarily unavailable. So, this is the entire resolution history of the county commission for 2013. 2014, 2015, all the way back to 2007 is present. So, I just wanted to ask if anybody had any thoughts about that, or at least some resolution that will go find it.
Good point, and I'll take a look into that, but thank you. Was not aware of that.
There's a lot of things that have happened, and of course, resolutions won't capture that information. It just shows what actions were taken by the commission, and I'm kind of interested in that, so, for 2013.
Thank you.
And finally, again, while apologies, I think, are too late. There's a lot of water under the bridge, and things have come, but maybe that's a start. But in the absence of that, in the private sector, when you misbehave, the language in personnel records or in personnel policy said, "Corrective action shall be taken up to, including termination." Of course, we can't terminate. We elect. We can reelect, but at this point in time, that doesn't serve much purpose, because terms will end, and governor will reappoint. So, may I submit that maybe it's a, "Action shall be taken up to, including request for resignation."
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Norman, I'm a Salina. In the July 9th paper, it was printed that guns are allowed in the State House in Topeka, but yet, we don't allow guns here in our courthouse. Why not? We're entitled to it. And if people are scared of being shot or something, I guess, don't put yourself in that position where you're going to get hurt. Life is a risk. If you can't accept them risks, you better go hide. Also, it was been talked about insanity for employees to lose weight. I think it's a pretty good idea. Might cheapen up your insurance some.
Thank you, Norman.
I think the gun issue has got to do with building authority more so than as commissioners with, commissioners are on that board, and that's something that we could bring up on our agenda with the building authority. Because this is not, this isn't just a courthouse. It's a city county courthouse, and we, they've made the decision, what they made on, and that decision was based a lot on a judge didn't want guns upstairs. But we have a new judge now, so things could be talked and asked, and questions could be, could be asked on those concerning those things.
I would rather have somebody present with a gun to protect the rest of the people instead of some shooter coming in here, and nobody can confront him.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward at this time?
Ray Ryska, 235 North Santa Fe. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Some of the rules about TIF and Starbong districts, the downtown Salina, require the county to sign off approval. A recent question was in a KORA, request I submitted to the city. Jason Gage responded, "There is no contract or agreement with Salina 2020." That's the question of why, why not? I mean, dealing with a corporation, you know, it seemed like there should be some kind of an agreement. This is about the field house funding. What's to prevent Salina 2020 from jumping out of the commitment of one half of the private funds with no agreement? What happens is the public is left holding the bag. Who is the city dealing with? When is unknown who the people are in the Salina 2020 Corporation? Just because Brian Richardson states in public 2020 made the private money donation goal does not make it so. Perhaps the money, four and a half million, should be placed in escrow to prevent any shenanigans. Show me the money. That being said, the other issue is, where's the city getting the remaining four and a half million? Well, guess who? Taxpayer. The taxpayer. What the heck is the city is up to its eyeballs in debt? So, what's another four and a half million for a field house that we've never had in the past? If this is such a great deal, let Salina 2020 and fire the, fund the entire nine million. Ask why anyone would donate four and a half million. Who gets the revenue on this, if any? What does Salina 2020 get for the four and a half million? Seems like there's a whole lot of things going on behind closed doors. And my comment about this whole issue is the oligarchy saga continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
It's adoption issue of fiscal year 2016 for the Salina County budget, and Rural Fire Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 have staff report by Rita Deister, County Administrator.
We had a hearing, public hearing last week on the budget that's presented. The only change from what was published in the paper prior to the hearing is that the Rural Fire District Number 2 budget has been reduced by $9,000 from the requested amount.
All right. Questions staff at this time? Is there any public comment?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. Again, I want to say kudos for all your hard work on getting a appropriate budget done. Sedgwick County's resolution will be interesting to follow. As different budget figures came together, the county did their budget, the city did their budget, we followed the state budget processes, I began to ask myself, what does law and order cost to provide, what is the cost of providing law and order here in Salina County? I just was hearing different figures, and I, I'm curious. So, this became kind of a project I started probably last Sat, two Saturdays ago, and it's very imperfect. There are some real limitations for me, with me trying to gather and synthesize and pull this information together. But we know, we, here, we have the councils of the Sheriff's Office, the jail, the juvenile center, unified court, county attorney, and drug court, and that seems to be about $7 million. Or about, you know, that's a pretty big chunk of our budget. In checking with the city, they're sp, spending about $9 million for their police department. At Rod Franz's request, he suggested offsetting municipal court costs against fines collected, so that's about $181,000. And then this, he wanted the city payment for the jail listed separately. With the state costs, he's, Rod Franz suggested getting information from the State Highway Patrol. Kansas Bureau of Investigation also obtained some information from Department of Corrections. And then I used Annie Grievous and her staff supplied the figures for Department of Community Corrections. And so, what I found, when all of these costs got added up, some of them had to be prorated, and I prorated it based on Salina County's population to that of the state population to come up with the cost. I'm finding that we're spending pretty close to $27 million a year to keep us safe. And that's about a per resident cost of $500 per year. And I just was a little bit surprised. And like I say, there's a lot of problems with me, just as a citizen, trying to gather this information. But for me, it's an important benchmark, and I know there's some fallacies with using it as a benchmark. But I would just suggest, because I presented this to the city, I should present the same information here. I've cleaned up a few errors. I can see my formatting skills are not so good late in the evening, so I apologize for some of that. But as, as you continue with the budget process, the process isn't over. This is a financial management piece. It's looking at what are the costs, and kind of seeing what, what things are. And I'll have a few more ideas I'll share separately with you on that. But I just wanted to provide you with that information. And I left on with my source information his, just because I really did try to find legitimate sources for, for the figures I used.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When you said you prorated it, and prorated it out and figured out what the cost was for citizen, you're taking all the citizens in the entire county.
In the state, or in the state, and, or, I divided the cost by the, I came up to a cost per resident, and then multiplied it by the number of citizens in Salina County.
Okay. Salina County as a whole.
Right.
So, when you said you were surprised because it was high or low?
To me, it seems very high.
Okay. I thought it sounded low.
And that, that could be, you know. It's just, for me, it's like, that's why you look at benchmarks, you know. What does it cost to stay safe in this community? Because it, this doesn't include fire department. It doesn't include emergency management. It doesn't include the military. It doesn't include Homeland Security, FBI, CIA, all of these other sources. This is just, what, what's, what it costs to keep me safe from Ray over here, and, you know, a few other of the, the, you know, the citizens, the people I live in community with, what does it cost to keep me safe? You know, and that, that's what I kind of, you know.
So, you can't say first responders, because it's just law enforcement is what you're talking about.
Yeah. Because with fire department, you have the value of homes and insurance figures in, and, and that, that's kind of different.
Yeah.
So, so, like I say, this was just law and order. And law enforcement tends to just mean the, the police and the sheriffs, and the plainclothes guys, and some of that. So, I wanted to get at what the costs were for the courts and for the jail. And then, if we have the jail, we have to include incarceration, you know, and then community corrections is, for me, I was really surprised that community corrections, when all was said and done, is such a big price tag. So, you know, it's just, for me, it was just out of curiosity.
Another thing that I have a question about on that, there's probably people in this room that pay a lot of property tax. There's probably people in this room pay no property tax.
Correct.
There's probably people in this room pay a lot of income tax. There's probably people in this room pay no income tax.
Right.
So, why are you coming up with the $500 per citizen? I don't see that at all, you know.
Well, yeah, but...
But it's not, it's not.
It's trying to come up with some benchmark.
Basically, some people aren't paying a dime. Maybe we ought to just charge everybody in the county $500 at the start of the year to get police protection. That'd take care of a lot of taxes for us, Rita. That'd bring our budget way down. Maybe we ought to think about that.
Well, you've got, got three different entities involved, the city, county, and state, so...
Well, I know, but, you know, we could, we could just charge that $500 to everybody in the county right off the bat, and then we could bring our property taxes way down. Right? It would.
Commissioner Price, I was using it as a benchmark.
I know.
What other benchmarks would you suggest? If, when you hear $27 million to keep us safe in Salina County, what benchmark would you use?
Do you feel, I feel pretty safe in Salina County.
I feel pretty safe, but...
I mean, I feel very safe.
While I don't pay property tax, my, when I pay rent, I can bet my landlord is paying property tax.
Sure he pays.
So, you know, there are different ways we get at this.
We have, we have also low-income housing. Some people hardly pay any rent, you know.
Right.
They're just, not everybody's paying $500 is the point I was making.
Karen, this is very, very detailed and helpful information, so I appreciate it.
It's just meant to be, as I would suggest, when you go to state and national meetings, you know, what are the costs of having law and order in different communities? This is just to provide you with, with a citizen's kind of really limited point of view of what it might be. And I would appreciate hearing more about what this all costs.
Do we pay, compared to a small county, let's take Ottawa County or Ellsworth, because they have less law enforcement, because they have less people, but yet, they still have to have all these jails and all. Maybe they're paying $1,000 apiece, too. That'd be kind of interesting to know how other counties are, you know, Sedgwick, large counties, middle counties. So, that'd be some good research to do also.
If I had access to it, finding things on the web is pretty tricky, to find the Ottawa Sheriff's County budget on the web. Probably is beyond my capacity and my willingness to pay for QRA fees and all of that good stuff. But I just would suggest whatever benchmark it is you use, because I do understand the per resident cost is kind of a problematic one, but it would be, it's really helpful to compare what we're spending in comparison to others, I think. And get out of the mindset of, well, this is what it has traditionally cost us here, so this is what we're going to budget for and increase this way. That's part of my point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. As John Adams said, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It's wholly inadequate to govern, you know, any other." And these things are going to go up and sit it down.
Thank you. Ray Ryska, 235 North Santa Fe. Karen Shade decided to bring my name up in public. Is it a personal attack on me about the comment that she made, or was it just hubris and unnecessary? And...
I'm just guessing. It's teasing. So, I don't know what...
You're sitting next to her. You're right next to her. You're the closest one available at the time.
All right. Do we bring it back to the commission for action? First of all, I think we need to move it off of the table for consideration, and then we can vote on it.
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the adoption of Salina County and RFDs 1 through 7 fiscal year 2016 budget from the table for consideration and possible action.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We need a motion to approve, actually, now?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve fiscal year 2016 Salina County and RFD 1 through 7 budget.
I second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That also passes 5-0. Item number two?
Emergency Management Monthly Update with Hannah Stambaugh, Director of Emergency Management.
Morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't have a whole heck of a lot to report to you. This'll be a bimonthly report of the months of June and July. I do have a couple of pictures to show you, and I know that the report was provided to you in your packet. Thank you very much, Don. Just to kind of recap, I want to do some, just some recap of some of the weather events that we have had. We did have a couple of incidents where we were issued or put in tornado watches or thunderstorm warnings. We had two incidents in the month of June. On June 3rd, they put us in a tornado watch, but whatever they had predicted for that day never came to fruition, so they ended up taking us out of the watch pretty quickly. June 7th was probably, was a storm that really caught us by surprise. It was later in the evening on a Sunday, and had some golf ball-sized hail that was reported. This is just about, this is north of Salina by, up by K-143 highway. This was a storm that fired up really quickly and moved out of the county very quickly as well. The city of Salina really didn't see a whole lot of precipitation. Most of the northern parts of Salina County and the eastern parts of Salina County saw some. But this was pretty exciting, other than the fact that it came up really darn quickly on us. Then, just the next day, this kind of gives you a nice little camera view. One of our volunteer storm spotters has a camera that's up by the United Building, and he sent me this picture. I thought it was really neat. It shows the skyline and shows a, the cold front that actually moved through. This was a storm that, there was no warnings attached to it whatsoever. It looks pretty scary. But the storm moved through, and then the next day, as soon as the temperature, or as soon as the storm moved through, the temperatures dropped like 20 degrees or something, something silly, crazy like that. But it was a nice little storm that came through. I just thought it was a really cool picture that he sent us. Then, in, we had three different thunderstorm warnings in July, on the 15th, the 19th, and then on the 25th. But for our total for June and July, our rain, the rainfall that we had proved to be normal for Kansas, for much of Kansas. There were some below-normal rainfall portions in the Salina County area, and our temperatures were normal to above-normal for both of those months, months as well. Our total precipitation for the month of June was 4.5 inches. Seems quite a bit, but that's pretty, that's pretty normal. And total precipitation for July was 3.86. So, at the end of July, for the 2015 year, we're only about a half an inch below normal precipitation values for the whole entire year, which is not too terribly bad. Due to the dry weather conditions and some of the heat that we've had in July, the drought index changed just a little bit. From my last report, we were out of the drought situation, but they put us into a moderate, or, I'm sorry, not moderate, abnormally dry category. This gives you a really good map that shows precipitation for the month of July all across the state of Kansas. And if you can kind of see us right there, smack dab in the middle, we're right there in that, that three, three and a half inch range that we've received. You'd see that most of eastern Kansas and then pockets over in western Kansas receive some pretty good precipitation for the month of July. And then, just a picture of where the drought monitor sits as of August the 4th, in the circle around Salina County. Some of the emergency management activities that we had happen in June and July have been some events that we were able to complete that have been months and months and months of planning and organizing. One of the biggest things would have been on June 16th and June 17th. Our office had partnered with Kansas Wesleyan University, the Volunteer Connections, Salina Regional Health Center, as well as the Red Cross, to do a training event that was specifically targeted towards volunteer organizations or community organizations that would be active in disaster situations. So, the United Way, the Red Cross, Salvation Army, faith-based organizations, health departments, hospitals, those were the people that we were trying to target. And we had folks from all across the state that came here for two days, and we did a two-day, what we called a disaster response symposium. We spent the first day at Kansas Wesleyan doing several different breakout sessions with them that had topics that we covered, anything from how the United Way works to how the Red Cross works, and how it all works together. And then, the second day, we went out to Crisis City, and this is a picture from out at Crisis City, where we had, we did an exercise. We presented a scenario for these volunteer organizations, and we talked through a flood scenario, and how, what they, what their organization could bring to the table. It was very enlightening. One of the biggest things that everybody walked away from it was just the realization of how many different organizations there are across the United States, and who all does what. It was very well received. We were very impressed with it. Here's a picture from the Kansas Wesleyan from day one. We did a response panel with the Red Cross and the United Way, and then just a picture of some of our participants. So, it was a, it was very well received. We were very glad, and hopefully, that we can do this again. But we did this event all through grant funding that was secured through the Volunteer Connection. Very, very proud of, of what we did. Hopefully, we can do it again. And then, for the rest of the information that I have is just for the fire districts and their activity. On your guys' printout, we broke down all their calls for service for the months of June and July, which seems to be quite a bit. But in total, for June, there was a total of 18 calls for service amongst our fire districts, with the top two being grass fires and fire alarms. And then, in July, we had a total of 27 fire calls, with nine of them being grass fires and eight of them being fire alarms. So, we've been pretty busy with grass fires and fire alarms the last couple of months. But then, I do have a couple of pictures to show you. This is a, I had come in and talked to the Commissioners after the 4th of July to give you guys a report on the activities there. This is just one of the public service announcements that the Salina Fire Department had up at every single one of their fire stations. Again, I don't think there's enough words to express the gratitude that we have of the citizens of Salina and Salina County for, for paying attention and helping us out with, with following the rules and the regulations. We were very, very, very pleased. Had a great fireworks season. And I think a lot of it had to do with the, the information that we exchanged with the fire departments, the police department, and my office, with getting the information out to the citizens. So, we really, really thank everybody for that. And then, I want to show you a picture of District 5. This is District 5's new squad. This will be unit number 512. It is right now getting the box and everything put on it out at Wise Fire, but the brand-new, spiffy, pretty red truck that'll be online, hopefully. We're hoping by later this fall, to be a great asset for Salina County. And then, a picture of Salina Fire and Fire District Number 7 doing training together. They were training on relay pumping, and this is one of the items that they found during the Flying J fire, when District 7 went to go helps the line of fire with this. Was, one of the issues that they found was the relay pumping aspect of it, and so, they decided they were going to train together and learn how to work with each other. But overall, I mean, it's been a pretty good last couple of months. We'll see what the rest of the, the rest of the year has in store for us. Unless you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
You have any upcoming training or conferences to go to?
We do. We've, our, fall time is... We've, our, fall time is pretty busy. Uh, some of the biggest things that we've got is on September 12th. We've been working with the, uh, 184th, um, air refilling wing out at the Smoky Hill bombing range. We are going to be doing an exercise on a Saturday morning out at the bombing range. It'll be a plane crash scenario, and it's specifically targeted towards our volunteers. So, uh, we will have most of our fire districts out there, and the big thing will, um, get them to mitigate the situation and then hand it off to the air refilling wing out of McConnell that will come up and do that. So, that's, that's something really big. And then, um, our annual emergency management conference will be in Junction City in September.
Okay. Very good. Questions? Any public comment? Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time. Move to item number three?
Planning and zoning monthly update with David Neal, Director of Planning and Zoning.
David?
Morning, Commissioners. Um, starting off with the permit activity, it's been going kind of steady. We're behind our normal year by about seven permits, but that, I can always expect those things to go up or down a little bit. Um, as far as the kind of permits we're doing, still, it's a regular pattern. Most of it's going to be some kind of outbuilding. We have done a couple houses, which is always a good thing. For the commercial permits, um, I haven't checked on Webster Conference Center lately, but they've been working with the city to get that sewer extension going. That's, that's pretty much what they're waiting on. Uh, St. Francis, I drove by there the other day. They're almost done. That building looks good, so it's probably just some internal work they have to do and get the final inspections and get going. Uh, for the planning activity, we're actually pretty normal. It's, we do about six or so cases a year. Doing a lot of text amendments. Usually, there's a little more work to that, but we're handling it with no problem. Uh, cases that have come through, on August 3rd, we did a conditional use permit to renew the Johnson Sand Pit. So, that one will be, they're up and compliant. They've done a good job and worked with everybody. They'll be up and running until they're out of sand. Uh, coming up in September, the airport has applied for some text amendments to change their codes. Most of that deals with FAA language that has to be in the code. They're changing their visual approach to instrument approach, um, making sure that the math is incorporated into the zoning. With us, for the most part, if you're under the map area, we pass your permit over to the airport so they can make sure that you're not in the flight, your, whatever your building doesn't extend into the flight area. So, it doesn't change much for us. Uh, coming up, we had talked about the voting requirements, going from, uh, unanimous to two-thirds. That is scheduled for next Tuesday at 11 o'clock. You'll have to officially pull it from the table when you start that agenda, and we'll get you set up there. And then, once that is done, it'll probably take about two weeks, because I have to publish the voting requirements first, but then we will, uh, have you pull the term limits for the planning commission. You'd ask for that to get one done and then the other. For the violations, uh, we had talked about it this morning. For 1849 West North Street, the bid has been, we did all the bid acceptance, and all we have to do is have, bring it in front of you so that you accept one of the two bids that were put out, and then set up the contract and have the property cleared. Uh, for the kennel on Holmes Road, that one, I just have to do an inspection. We'll see if they're compliant with the use permit or not. Uh, there was one that was brought to my attention. There were some, um, piled rocks in the floodplain over by Simpson Road. That one, I haven't formally written the violation yet. What they're doing is stockpiling aggregate material for the Iron Road project. So, basically, those rocks are going to go away as soon as the Iron Road project is done, but I'm keeping my eye on it because I want to make sure that it's gone and we don't have to do anything.
Are they going to bring a crushing crew in, in again?
No.
Because that was where the problem was.
When I talk to the contractor, what they're doing is just moving aggregate the same way our road and bridge does.
But they were told last time in zoning not to do that again.
Right. And that's...
So, you're allowing it to go on then, or are they stopping it?
Uh, they're not doing any rock crushing.
No, are they hauling rock in still?
No, they shouldn't be hauling any more rock in. It should be going out for that project. And basically, what it comes down to...
Why did it get hauled in to start with, though?
That's where the property owner decided to stage that and...
People just do it, they do what they want to do, it doesn't matter what the county says, huh?
By the time my violation is written, the project's done.
Yeah, well, it, it's been written several times, and there's been violations several times. And people aren't happy in that area with the dust from the roads and stuff.
Right. Uh, the last one we're working on, uh, 4720 West Pleasant Hill, that's one where we had the septic tank collapse. We were working with HUD. A new owner has bought the property. They're well aware that they have to fix up the septic tank, so that will get done. For the environmental health, I don't have a lot of good stuff to compare this with, because I'm just now going through the database to see what I have. Looks like the permits are going, I would say, normal, though, like I said, I have nothing to compare there. Um, you can see most of the work is done through septic systems, and that goes through all the counties that we work for. For some of the grant activities that we're working on, our goal of, uh, 100 healthy homes visits, we'll have no problem with that. The last update I had was 97 homes. We still have radon kits, so anybody in Salina that would like a free radon kit, come stop by my office. We'll show you how to use it. It's just an envelope. You open it up, set it in your house for a couple of days, and then mail it in, and they'll tell you if you have high radon or not. And then, as much as possible, part of the grant that we have allows for mitigation of radon in homes. We've done, I had four. It's just been updated to six houses that we've had mitigated. And I have another, it's a total of 13, so I've got another seven to go on that. And I'm hoping we can get a couple more people in before September when this grant ends. We may asking for an extension of the grant to make sure that we can get as many houses as we can mitigated out of this thing. Then, for the other projects going on, the floodplain mapping, we're still waiting on the state and the engineers to work out. Most of, it's working the details around Salina that's the hard part on this. The county part is pretty much sitting on hold. Um, for the addressing, and I think I've mentioned this before, going to Next Gen 911, we'll end up having to work on our address policy. It's not a rush project at this time, but it's something that we'll have to consider, changing from addressing on the driveway to addressing on the house. But we don't expect that'll change anybody's address that's already out there. It'll be future homes to get addressed that way. And then the other thing we have going on is the, uh, annexation of county land. That went through the City Planning Commission and was approved unanimously. It now has to go to the City Commission. Most likely, it'll be scheduled for the 24th, but it hasn't been officially scheduled yet. Once I know, I will be there to hopefully get that through.
Remind me again what that's going to say, what that says on the annexation?
For the annexation, it'll be the annexation, um, we're calling it the K-wood Property. It is the property that is on...
Oh, that's that one.
Ohio, south of Shiloh.
I thought you were talking about a gen, general, general policy. Gotcha.
Now, generally, the county, we do not deal in any annexation. Cities do that part. We're only involved because we've asked for that property to be annexed in.
Very good. I'm sorry.
Any questions?
You got any upcoming training or events or conferences you're going to?
Uh, for training, last month, because it was right next door in Ellsworth, I ran out and got some quick floodplain training. It was just a small class. It keeps my certification up to date. Uh, this September, we will, I'll be going to, uh, the State Floodplain Conference. I get a lot of good information there. And then, October, I'll be going to the State Planning. It's a four-state planning conference in Kansas City. So, I usually, usually the bigger it gets, the more I can get out of other rural counties and see how they're handling things.
All right, questions, staff?
Uh, yeah, David, I was just going to ask you on the environmental health, um, activities. You said you haven't had, um, a chance to compare them yet, because it's, your department is new at doing this. You don't have any of the data from the health department?
We have the, we have the data. It just takes time to dig through and pull the numbers out. I have to figure out how I'm going to, what's the best way to report it to you and, and translate all the years?
Oh, okay, so is it, was it like in...
It's in an access database.
Are they two different programs? Were you using two, are we two, on two different systems or something?
No, it's an access database.
Okay, so it, it's, it's just a matter of time to go through and do.
It's just a matter of time to get the work done.
Okay, and then I see also, I saw on your report that you're, um, going to sit down when it slows down a little bit with the sanitarians and see what's working, what's not. And, I mean, do you really see that there's been issues? I mean...
Uh, most of the issues we're handling are the, uh, real estate transactions. A lot of times, what happens there is you pay for the inspection, and we have two issues that I want to look at and see if we can work this out. One is the way the language is drafted. It says the inspection is good for the contract, and it might be something that we want to look at, that the inspection is good for a few months or some time period, so that while that house is up for sale, we do the inspection once, and we don't have to do it multiple times.
Okay.
The other problem we run into is, a lot of times, because the septic systems are aging out now, they were originally built in the 60s or 70s. It's been 30, 40 years since they've really been looked at. The concrete's wearing out. The tanks are breaking slowly.
Mm-huh.
What ends up happening, the real estate transaction says, "Well, your tank has failed." And when that happens, then you have to pay extra for a septic permit. And we want to look at improving that process so that we're not doing a double fee if we don't have to. We want to make sure our costs are covered, but we don't want to overcharge anybody.
Right, and I see where you're also going to be looking at, at those fees. So, we probably...
Right.
I don't know, those fees were probably set in place when it was under the health department, and now that we've transitioned over a little bit, um, do you see that they're going to be changing or increasing?
I'm hoping they decrease.
Okay. That's what I wanted you to hear. I'm sure Dave wanted to hear that, too.
Yes. Well, it's good and bad. I mean, it's part of the budget figures.
I know, I know. But I know if a lot of it has to do with, you feel like some residents are double paying...
Right.
That's where you want to fix it.
I want to make sure that they're accurate fees that just cover our costs.
Right, but you do want to make it, yeah, you do want to make the fees appropriate, so they're, they're paying for your time and the sanitarians' time to, to do their work, so...
Well, and that's what he was saying about the realtors. If they didn't, if they didn't sell on that first contract, they have to do it again on the next contract. And they've already done that, what, once or twice? I know.
Right.
I do know about that, but that's, that's not a fair way of doing it, really.
Right, we just want to make sure...
And I, I'm glad you said that.
I'm glad you're looking into that, yep.
Further questions or comments? Public comments?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I want to talk a little bit about this quiet title action and the vehicles and these two bids that were submitted. And there were supposedly four companies presented, present to inspect the property. Doesn't state who they are, but, uh, one question I'd like to ask is that, was this, uh, 1849 advertised for bids in the Salina Journal? Is that correct?
I'm not positive at this time. We go by our normal bid process. I believe it was advertised, but I can't confirm that.
So, can we find out if that's true or not?
I'm sure we can by the time this is, uh, this is on the agenda next week.
Okay, um, I'm a little concerned about, you know, one company submitted a bid of 5,000, the other one was 1,700, and do both of these companies have salvage licenses to be able to do this type of removal from that property?
As we discussed this morning, no, one of them is not a salvage operator.
So, that's an invalid bid then, isn't it?
No, the only thing the county is looking for is to clear the property.
Well, that might be the case, but it's an invalid bid. Wouldn't you say that could be true, then?
I think he's saying no.
Well...
I, I think all of this was discussed this morning. We are just repeating this for the camera now.
I understand.
Well, how's the public going to know unless we talk about it? That's the issue.
He can call me.
And, and it will be on the agenda next week, so...
And I understand that, but, uh, sometimes, uh, a little preparation, you know, would be helpful, too.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I'll just go ahead and let that go until there's more discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Move on to item number four?
Approval of County Commission Minutes for the week of August 4th, 2015.
I made that we, uh, Mr. Chairman, I made that we accept the County Commission's Minutes for August 4th, 2015 as presented.
A second.
Is there any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission today?
Interest form, as you were going to announce.
I did, but that was announced. Fred, thank you, very good.
I just didn't want you to get out here before you remember.
And that's Commissioner Guile's job, just to do that, to...
I even had it.
I know. I have been remiss in reminding the public that, um, uh, we would like more, um, participation in, in our committees, and, and, um, specifically, the Solid Waste Committee is, um, needing a member, uh, from the county. And so, we would encourage anybody that, uh, is interested in that subject to, to apply. And also, we are going to, um, start making appointments to the Health Board, and so, um, you know, we have a lot of, uh, interest forms on file, but would love to have more. So, um, please, get on the website and look at that and, and, uh, let us know if you're interested. Also, another announcement, um, we will be reconvening briefly upstairs to, uh, sign some documents, and then we are headed over to Dairy Queen. It almost sounds funny to say, doesn't it? We're heading over to Dairy Queen for a little treat, and so, that is, uh, open to the public, although I doubt Rita's buying for the public, but, uh, anyway. We'll do that at 12 o'clock? All right. Anything else that comes for the commission today? All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.